Okay. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number. 1301-715-8592, meeting ID 85973909823, passcode 617573. Please you, please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort this meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakeville provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disabilities coordinator, William Renaud, town engineer at 781-246-6308 as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant you your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove any accessibility barrier for you. Agenda, call to order and roll call 221-37 Crescent Street Commons Development LLC 46, I'm sorry, 44, 46, and 48 Crescent Street. Zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee will meet to discuss architecture issues discussed at the last hearing and draft decisions and conditions. Three adjourn.
All right, so it is now 6:37. Amy Walden, Jim McVane from the zoning board presiding. I did get all your material sent, Brian. I can honestly say I didn't, I didn't spend as much time as I thought I would with it. And I guess I want to step back a bit because we did discuss a few things that you were going to follow up on.
Yeah.
Which had to do with the stone, you're gonna talk, I think you had a meeting with the structure, the civil engineer?
Yeah, I do, I did, Jim, yeah.
You want to start by reporting on that maybe first?
Yep, so I have an updated plan to show you. Find it. I'd like to show you some notes now that have been added. Went to our discussion on Tuesday, hang on. Gonna make me co-host Jim again.
You already are. Or you should be, should I say?
I thought I saw it pop up at the beginning.
Right? Can I see that?
Yep.
Right. So you know, there's nothing's really changed on this, just existing conditions plan. How we look down here. First thing I had him do was in the legend, add a note that V indicates a visitor space.
Yep.
Okay, we talked about this. And we met with the client after our meeting on Tuesday and talked with the engineer. So he said that we promised eight visitor parking spaces. I said we promised 10, that's my notes. You guys agree with that?
I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
Yeah, um, do you, Amy, you remember?
I can't remember the exact number.
Well, I, you know, I'm betting it's 10, so let's assume it's 10, okay? And if it isn't, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that. But the most it was, was 10, and if I'm betting my left arm right now, I'm betting it's 10. So, so what we've done is we, we met and figured out where the, the best place to put them would be.
Yep.
The first two should be here, obviously, because if someone's coming to visit quickly and wants to run in and see somebody, they don't even have to go in the garage. Okay?
Yep.
And then we would put, so that's two, and then we would put eight in the garage, and we figured they should be right when people go in.
Yeah, no confusion.
Yeah, we don't want people have to, you know, search for a visitor parking space.
Right.
This way they pull in, they got a visitor space here if they handicap, they have a handicap space. And they've got this whole row of visitor parking right here. So you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
So what's the C stand for?
Those are the little bit of smaller spaces, Jim, they're eight and a half instead of nine feet wide.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and there's a leg, I had him put the legend on that. He indicates eight and a half by 18, not nine by 18.
Okay.
Now, parking ratio per unit is 1.6, it's over, over the required amount. So, so I think, you know, I, I think it's important to label those visitor spaces because then we know where they are, instead of just saying we're going to provide 10, you can monitor those spaces.
No, I totally agree. I totally agree too.
Okay. So that's the first thing that I had him do. Then him run to make sure that no changes have affected our landscaping plan, and they have not. So the last plan that Jim Emanuel did works with this. And put some notes here that I wanted to bring to your attention.
Now, this one, this next one coming up does show the transformer.
Yes, oh yeah, let me update you on that, okay? So we're in discussions right now with Vinny McNean at the light department, Jim.
Yeah.
We've engaged with him. For your last emails that we've got. Hang on. I just wanted to show you what, we reached out to him after our meeting on Tuesday. And we, Rick did a plan, so I said to Ben, could you please see attached, so the transformer location is okay? And that's on the plan where I just showed you where we put it. These were his questions, Jim, that you're gonna be, and Amy, that you're gonna be interested in. Ben said a few things, where is the primary fee for the transformer? I'm not sure we can fit it next to the subsurface drain there, looks like only three feet between it and the property line. We need to see ballads on the plan protecting the front of the transformer. There must be five feet in front of the concrete pad, so we, when we're able to open the doors and work inside. Now, at that point, he didn't realize it was elevated.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it's up some, yeah.
So Rick applied. Ben, we are hoping to put the transformer on top of the wall, C attached sketch, is there a way we can make this work? And this is Ben's response. What's the distance between the drainage structure in the building? And our answer is seven feet. This, this is a system that is in the driveway. It said, that's a tall wall. I need to check to make sure our line truck can lift it up there. What's behind the transformer, just the grass plot? Our answer is yes, just grass. How will we access the front of the transformer, walk around the other side of the building, I assume? Yes, no stairs, free access around. Thanks for answering my questions, okay? So, so Ben's response and where we are with that right now. Thanks, Rick, I'll review this with the lineman and get back to you soon. You probably already know this, but I'm going to say anyways, I'm providing gas to multifamily unit buildings anymore, so it's probably gonna have to be all electric. Do you have any electrical plans for it yet? Are the plans to install electric car charges? Which I thought was an interesting comment that, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, we want to talk about that part of it too. So, so that, Jim and Amy is in the works with the light department.
But you haven't got the plan so yet as to location.
No. Are you guys okay with it up there?
I've always been okay with it up there, I mean, they're, they're concerned with, their concern was, as it is always, with someone driving into it, so they want bullets and everything else. Well, they'd have a hell of a good time driving up there. They hit it. And they, they should be able to lift that without any problem, basically, really. So I, and when they talk about drainage structures, they talk about the stuff underground?
Yeah, well, I don't think he understood the plan, you know?
No, he needs a, he needs like a cross section, basically, to show them how this whole thing goes together because even when you look at the grade, it steps up to that pad area.
If you don't, if you guys don't mind, if he starts barking at this, I might, Jim, get you involved a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
With him?
Sure.
All right, because I don't want him to say, oh, we've looked, it can only go out here, you know, in front.
No, we're not gonna listen to that.
No, but you guys mentioned that Tuesday that you wanted that resolved, so we jump right on it and we're, we knee deep into it.
Yep.
Okay? That's that, and thanks for pointing that out. What do you think of electric charging stations? You know, we really didn't talk about that.
The space is going to be assigned or are they free for all?
Yeah, they're gonna be assigned, Amy, which is interesting, you know, how, how you would do that, you know?
Yeah, that's the only way you'd do that, would be to take over some of the, some of the visitor spaces.
Right.
Even, even.
But, but that defeats the purpose of the visitor spaces, you know? Because then residents are gonna say, oh, great, I'm gonna leave my car in the visitor spot overnight to charge it.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and we're prohibiting, we're prohibiting the residents from parking there by putting an electric charging station in there, we're actually inviting them and encouraging them to park there.
And who, at whose cost is this going in?
Yeah. So, I represent, you know, some gas stations, you know, they were already looking at their business models now with these electric cars? And, and they're developing technology that you're gonna be able to pull into like a gas station, and they're gonna have electric, supersonic electric charges that you'll be able to pay, but you'll be able to charge your car in like 10 minutes fully.
Yeah, about 30 minutes, but anyway, I mean, who's to know what, how long? But you've got to have, you've got to have a special battery in your car to take that, that shocking, because they're at 220, basically, not 110. 110 takes like overnight. 220, basically, you can do 80% in like 20, 20 or 30 minutes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, I mean, we're not, we're not.
Spaces in there to, that you could give up to, to that, or no?
Well, do we, do we have to? I mean, that's, that's not a, it would be nice, and maybe, maybe on some other projects it'd be okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it not being a thing.
Yeah, I, I think we're too far into this to get into this discussion, quite frankly. I would, I would like, I would like them to have come to us earlier, you know, and said something to us. I mean, now we know that there is an interest out there, and maybe the developer is interested as well. Maybe it makes, for marketing purposes, it makes a lot of sense for them, I don't know.
Yeah. I can tell you one thing, you know, from doing some of these projects, like, you know, you, you might say, oh, well, put them in 54 and 53, and that way, if, you know, the owner of 47 has a, a electric car, they might be able to cooperate and, you know, swap spaces. You know what? People don't cooperate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're not using.
They wanna, they wanna drive in and go to their spot, and no, no matter what time of day, it's there for them.
You got it, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would just lead to more of a headache.
I mean, this is not a high-end condo or something, you know?
Right.
Yep. Okay. So I had a couple of things put on the plan that I wanted to go over with you guys, so take a look at. These are conditions of DPW, and they kind of go with the conditions that were in the, in the written decision that we talked about. All the stuff up above is just contractor stuff, but take a look at 14 if you can.
This is the same thing was on the.
Yeah. Is this more appropriate on the plan than in the decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, because then we don't have to condition it like that, right?
No, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't, I mean, unless you want belt, put it what, both places, but if it's on the plans and the, then the contractor, when he's bidding it, all right, knows that this is gonna be part of his bid work, all right? So if he goes out, for instance, and, and he gets a civil engineer, basically, the civil engineer knows that he's got to provide updated drawings, basically, for this process.
I just think we should add something in here, provide for, you do an approval as-built drawings, including location of all, we should have of all drainage, sewer, water, electric infrastructure in the building. Do you think you need to know, would you want the location of the building?
You're on, you're on a civil drawing, right?
Yeah.
So all the stuff that's in there has to do with civil.
Okay, should we have a similar note on the architectural, Jim, for the building?
You could put one on there, yes.
But that, is that needed for the building?
I was gonna, just gonna ask that, do we need that?
Really need it as-built for the building, I mean, that's like.
Well, how, what does it read on the other, on the other thing?
Hold on, I'll take you right there, hold on. The kitty.
Yeah, it's.
Jim's cat's talking.
The food is on the other side of the door, so he wants to get out there.
I don't want him, want him out.
It's like your dog.
Dogs are gonna heat that cat, watch out, my whole computer.
Right, gonna come up to the computer screen.
My 130-pound dog.
My god.
One cat grazes and the other one is a vacuum cleaner, so in order for one cat to eat, we've have to put it away, otherwise the vacuum cleaner comes along and takes care of it all.
Oh my god. That's funny.
The hell is it, hold on. Find it now, making you dizzy? All right, here you go, Jim. As-built.
We're looking at 31?
31.
Now, this is, this is right in the, it needs this, it needs to tie down the building, not the, not the construction of the building in the form of as-built of the building. It's, it's the location of the building is where you want to tie it down.
Wouldn't that be the site civil?
Civil?
Yeah.
It is civil, yeah, yeah, it is.
Yeah, so why don't we just add building on?
It's either civil or survey, or the survey is basically, but survey is gone.
But then you had this, which was kind of contradictory to what they said below, and this is what we had, which I, we can't have all these, I just want one condition on the plan that, that deals with all this.
Yeah, and so, so for purposes of occupancy, I think, and that's right, in order to get the issue of occupancy, basically, we want all of the buried utilities located in what they are, as well as the location of the, so if the building burned down, say, and there was no foundation issue, you could build it up again because you knew exactly where it was.
Okay, so we'll just add building to that note.
Well, it says infrastructure, so then just say, and structure, right?
Yeah. Go back to that, hold on. 14.
Yeah, and then as well as the structure itself.
Now, locating as-built condition. Drainage, storage. The only thing that's not in here, that's in the other one, is occupancy. Well, it says certification.
No, it says.
I had to request a certificate, yeah, okay. A all changes between the as-built conditions and the approved plans. Stormwater and like, as work has been completed in substantial compliance with the approved, yeah.
I think Greg's gonna have a problem with that word substantial. Right?
Well, someone on a different project might, but, I mean, we're multiple buildings, but this is just one building, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as you know, Jim, being an architect, you know, you really need that word because sometimes you might be three inches off. What's it like, right? And that substantial compliance.
Yeah, but they, they, they should be taking that information, as I said the other day, they need to be taking that information off the site the day that they're putting this stuff underground. And if they don't keep up with it, then it's a problem.
Yeah.
So, you know, and it's the guy that lays it out and lay, and you know, digs the excavation for all the stuff, basically, that's the time before they bury it, that they basically note it down as to where it is.
That's a good point.
If they do it later, then you have no idea where the heck it is. You have a connection at the street and you have a connection in the building and you assume it goes straight between the two, not necessarily.
Yeah. Good. So, all right, so I'll tweak that language with him with the building. And then you agree we can get it out of the discussion?
I think you can take it out of the other one because it was, it was, it's triple, it's triple.
Triple, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we added 15, which is, we're gonna provide an environmental monitor, which is required by the town engineer.
Yep.
Okay. And he had one, the note number six on test hole information, these were all stuff in his letter that we wanted to make sure we included, but we wanted on the plan.
Right.
So I've, I've resolved that with the site civil. Okay. Nice. No. Find it.
They got granite curbing on this, yes.
Yeah, I had him put granite curbing, let's see if we can find that.
Well, I can see it in the detail.
Well, Jim, they should, in the detail, he should have added the granite curbing, maybe you can help me find.
Right, no, it's at the top of the page, you got up right now. Right at the top says vertical granite curbing.
Ah, there you go.
Now, the only thing is to point out that it also has to be noted where on the plans, on the site plans.
Maybe it is, let's take a look. The off-site improvement, I'll get to that in a minute, so grading and utility plan.
I don't see a note on that, but.
I don't either. Unless it's on the, let's see if it's, if it's on the, on the site plan.
Looks like they filled in a few driveway areas. Replace sidewalks.
Replacing the sidewalks, we put that on there.
The curbing.
You know? Oh, you know, how much, like, like this, is this a wall, Jim, or is this curbing?
That's curbing.
Yeah.
I mean, you got two at the, at the throat, you've got two curve pieces, basically, into the site. It looks like right beside it, you have a section of curbing, basically, that is covering an old driveway throat.
Yep.
And then you got some up at the end, but it's not, you know, in, in those cases where the curbing pre-exists, it's really about resetting it so everything is at the same elevation.
Let's see what he said in the note. Hold on. Where is that? Is that vertical curb set in existing pavement, is that?
Vertical curbing set in existing pavement.
That's where he's filling in the hole.
Yeah, but I think there's, there needs to be something, because I'm sure there's been multiple layers of asphalt, so the curbing may only be, you know, like two inches high anymore. They really should be resetting the existing curbing as well.
Yeah, I think there needs to be more, there needs to be more detail showing the vertical granite curbing on the site, you agree?
Well, it, it should be noted in the plans where this is happening, some of it's new curbing, some of it's existing curbing being reset. So you get two types.
Got it. Okay. And he was supposed to put a note on the wall, the one of that's in the detail.
Has it got a section through the wall?
Let me see.
I don't see anything in that, well, what, 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 right there, right, no, right, go up a little bit.
Yeah, up here.
Above the drain line on the left. See the, see the drains there, it's says, no, go up a little bit more. Up. No, I'm sorry, go down, 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 sorry, I was sending you in the wrong direction. Keep on going down. Right there, right there, it says reinforced cement concrete wall.
Yep.
So what's it say on the outside of it? Looks like they've got something applied to it. Stone, something?
Stone veneer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's, but it's not enough detail, it needs to say to match the wall of stone veneer.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. And it should be capped. The stone shouldn't just go up to the top and just end, because it will peel off over time.
That stone veneer needs to say it's gonna match the foundation stone veneer.
Yep.
Right?
Yep. And it should be capped.
Yeah, I just made a note on that. Capped. Right? All right, and he's got the town engineer, we had done some changes to the drainage of the driveway that he, that Bill Renaud did not want this going out on the Crescent Street, so we've done done changes to hit, hopefully to his satisfaction. But he's in the process, he's in the process of reviewing them now.
So it's not looking for like a grill or something like that at the end of the driveway?
Yeah, there's gonna be gonna be caught, Jim, that not, the way he designed it, it's not gonna go in the, out into the street.
Well, we'll let, what else?
Let Bill, I don't want to.
Bill'll deal with that.
That was an issue that Bill had, he was, yeah, and we've addressed it. I was trying, you know, you're trying to, it's kind of like trying to herd cats, if you know what I mean. You're trying to, you know, get all these little things right on all the plans and.
Generally, that's what the architect's supposed to be doing too.
Yeah.
What are you looking for now?
I'm just looking for, you know, my notes here.
Oh.
So what I'm what I'm let me share this. I'll just show you, you know, kind of where I went with this after our meeting. So, and I've got my client put together a construction schedule that I'm sure in a minute. So I said in them, you know, I told them we had a meeting. It was discussed that we need the final architectural in civil plans to be 100% in sync, right?
Yep.
Okay. Tie up loose ends. Okay. So I need I said, I want to make sure the plans are in sync. It's our last shot to get this right for everybody. I wanted to make sure the unit members matched because when I looked at their plans last, I saw that Peter had four three bedroom units on his plan, but Rick had five on his plan. So, you know, they've they've got to be in sync. I wanted them to designate and label the 10 visitor parking spaces. And I think those should be on both plans because Peter's plan show the show the parking spaces, too.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. I wanted Peter to put I haven't got this back from PD yet, but I asked him to put a note on his plan regarding the garage lighting being on sensors.
I I talked to Peter today because I was I called him about Salem Street. And 110 Salem, a 610 Salem. And he thought it was on the thought it was in the image of the light that's in the in the submission package. Basically, there was a light there for the garage, but there was no note on it for it to be on sensors. And that's when I went to Bennett Street. And in fact, there is a note that's attached to the light fixture on Bennett Street. So that's how and so Peter said he would basically put it in the drawings. With that light fixture that's in the garage.
Great. Okay. So all right. So that needs to be done. And I'm glad I was glad to see you found that because that was really bothering me. That, you know, on Bennett, because I know that was a big issue for the board.
Yeah.
And I was glad to see that that was, you know.
No, that was that was covered. So we're all right there.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, and then so basically he just, you know, so that was for Peter. And Peter and Rick need to determine the exact height of the building from the zoning calculation, Jim.
Yep.
It's odd because the building is actually going to be low. It's going to be lower because the site's going to be lower.
Well, they generally they need to take an average around the site.
That's right.
And then the height of it and whatever, then then they can figure out what the average height is.
And they're in the process of doing that, but I just wanted them to both look at that and make sure they got it right.
Yeah.
And then I mentioned label labeling the visitor parking. On Rick's issues was to revise and update the zoning table to account for any overhangs on the building from a setback perspective. The transformer location, which we've talked about. The final sign off from the town engineer, which I actually think happened today. Put granite curbing on the plan for what which he seems to me that he kind of have to, but he didn't do it right. Looking at the plan that we just went over.
Well, I think he's thinking that they'll just match the existing curb that's there. But in fact, I think what we'll find out is that we really need to raise it up so it properly works.
Yeah. And then this, I think there needs to be a fence detail, and I think he might have put that on there. Let me go back to the plan. Hold on. Because there's going to be fencing up on the wall, right? Flat iron fence is called out, right?
Yep. Now, that's that that on the hillside.
He does. He did put the detail on it.
Yeah. Well, that's a it's. You know, this is this is on a on posts that are into footings. When in fact, it's going to be mounted into the top of the wall unless it's, you know, it doesn't matter. At least it shows the fence. The. But, you know, there's going to have to be a gate. Depending on how that electrical unit sits up there, they may need to be a gate.
Yeah.
So so if you're lifting this up, you need to be able to lift it through. So if you're seven feet up on the wall and then you got to go another four or five feet over the top of the fence, you're talking about, you know, 12 feet up in the air. Quite a ways.
Yeah, I don't think.
If they have the equipment that will do that, which I think they probably do, but I don't know for sure.
Well, I think when we talked to Bennett, the light department, we need to make him understand that he's got a fence there.
Yeah, well, I mean, it may be. You know, either there's a gate at that top that swings out, or it can easily be disassembled to get out of the way so they can, in fact, get the transformer off that ledge because otherwise we're just adding another obstacle for the light department.
Yeah.
And I certainly none of us certainly want that transformer out on the street where it is just plain ugly, period.
Yep. Okay, and then the other thing I asked is, is if you remember the traffic advisory committee wanted some crosswalk improvements.
Yep.
So the town engineer gave us two options. And instead of like trying to describe it, we now have a sheet.
Yeah, on the on the left. They show a plan of it.
A conceptual offsite improvement plan.
Right there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, is that I guess that can be determined, but that is because I know the cars parked pretty tight along there. So, you know, does it take out a parking spot to do that?
No. Well, that's why TAC looked at this and the town engineer, and that's what they wanted. They gave us this plan, Jim.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So, you know, I mean, we're just putting it where the town asks us to put it.
Now, the interesting thing there is. Okay, so they. So they put a crosswalk in. They they pitch, they show the pitch for handicapped. And then they send person that's handicapped across the street into a curb line with no handicap access.
No, they have it. We're putting a ramp in here.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, on that side, but look at the other side.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the crosswalk is at the curve. Should that not be?
There's no parking on this side of the street.
Doesn't matter. You're going to have to do something to to allow a person to mount the curbing.
Yeah.
By doing the same thing on both sides of the street.
Why wouldn't you have a ramp here?
Well, we're going to send the handicap person in a wheelchair. How are they going to get on the curb? How are they going to get on the sidewalk?
We're going to have to leave the crosswalk to go to the corner.
No, 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 you're gonna you're gonna send them out into traffic. You're gonna for a few moments, they're gonna have to go and take a left turn to corner. Why isn't that crosswalk aligned with a corner?
I don't know.
This is wrong.
All right, I'll revisit this.
And who who recommended this location?
The the GPW.
Is that fresh rock existing or it's added?
Added.
Added. Proposed crosswalk.
This is foolish.
Yeah.
Unless they're going to put a curb break right directly across from it, which they could do. Otherwise, it should be up and aligned with the corner where people are coming off the sidewalk anyway.
Right.
I want to see. What's going on out there? They go this way. I don't know why the crosswalk wouldn't be right here unless it's too close to an intersection.
Is that a thing?
Oh, Amy.
Now, what's that? That piece of concrete right there on the left? That's what they're trying to line up with? Right there.
Well, that's yeah, that's already a ramp.
No, it's not. No, I'm talking about the one in front of the doorway. Other one.
This one?
Yeah. Is that what is that what they're trying to line up with?
I doubt because we're ripping up all the sidewalk and putting new sidewalk in anyways.
Yeah, so that's why I say it should be lined up with the one on the curb corner curb.
All right, so I'm gonna I'm I'm going to visit that, Jim. If I need to get into a discussion with Bill Renaud on that, I'm probably going to tie you in.
Yeah, that's fine. So go back to that image again, if you can.
I can. Hold on.
So if we look, if we look across the street from that corner, where the where the other corner is, I'm sorry, on the other side of the street.
Over here?
That one. Yeah. So if you go straight across, is there a driveway? It looks like there's a driveway entrance there. Back up.
Now, there's driveway entrance right right here.
Yeah, but to what?
Crosswalk going to that.
Maybe that's why they pushed it over because it'd be going right into that driveway.
That being that being the case, then, if that in fact is the case, then they they need to do a curb cut on the other side of the street.
It seems like it can go right.
I don't know, though, Amy. That I mean, that doesn't really, you know, that doesn't line up with that driveway. Look, you could do a crosswalk right here to here.
Right. Yeah, because I mean, I'm literally driving right now and I've just driven past crosswalks that are right on the corner. I've stopped at a light right now that it's right on the corner of the of the street.
And why don't we? Why don't we visit that with Bill Renaud?
Yeah.
All right. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right. So that's that. Working on the O and M plan for the drainage and the overall O and M project plan. I don't have that yet. That's a work in progress. Bill Renaud wanted a SWIP plan, the stormwater management plan. We've done. My client prepared a draft construction schedule. We talked about that.
Yep.
Show you that. You go. They're planning on I'll let you look at it instead of me talking. You can see it. Is that big enough?
Yeah.
What's the sorry, I can't see it because I'm driving. What's the overall timeframe on that?
Starting on November, at the end of November, 2022 and finishing in June of 2024. So that's November, a year and a half, Amy.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna tell you about these guys. They're gonna move. They're not, you know, you've got some 40B people just sit on their permits because I think they try to sell them. They're building it. They're ready to go.
Brian, that I just I just pulled up Google map. And that driveway is aligned with that corner.
The driveway is?
The driveway to the parking, the driveway is. The driveway opening is a little bit wider than probably needed. But it's it's the curbing is where the driveway is and where the curb on the other side is. It's almost dead center of it. So I would say.
New granite and new sidewalks. Anyway, they can put the curb cut wherever they want. So can't they just line it up with an opening on the other side?
I think where they showed it is probably the best location at the moment, but what they need to do is they need to do, they need to do the they need to do the handicap curb cut on the other side on both sides of the street. I don't it may be that Renaud basically wasn't talking when he said this is where the crosswalk is that he assumed that they would put handicap ramps on either side. But the engineer has just shown it on one side. He should show it on both sides.
And that might be the case. That you know, let me just see if I can if I can ask Rick real quick. Hold on. He might pick up why he did that. I'd say I can add that, you know, might not might be that simple. Don't. He's not checking up. So I'll get a clarification on that. That's an issue to resolve.
Yep. Easily. It's easy to resolve. We can go with where they're proposing it.
Yeah.
But at the same time, they've got to do curb cuts on both sides for handicap.
Okay. Got it. Okay. And so that's it. And I'm working on the I think the O and M plan here is going to be important for the for the oh, here he is right here. Hold on. Hey, Rick. All right. Why I'm on the I'm on the call right now. I got you on speakerphone with the with Jim and Amy, so they can hear you. So we got a question on the on the on the on the crosswalk that we're putting in, right? And Jim and Amy can hear you, so you can answer this. You know the crosswalk that we're proposing?
Yes.
The infrastructure improvement. Why is it not a why is it not a handicap ramp on our side of the street to let people get on this, get on the crosswalk? Oh, he said there should be. It doesn't show it on the plan. We only show. You put a proposed crosswalk, but you only have proposed. Thank you. All right, just make a revision. Hear that?
Yeah.
All right.
Whoops.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good catch, though, Jim.
Yeah, great catch. Yep. Okay, well, that makes it easier, though. We don't have to run around. I mean, you know, so, okay. So so my I feel, you know, it's up to you guys' side, but I I feel that, you know, we're making good progress here, but I think we've got more work to do. You know, to finalize these plans and to get the O and M plan done and then finalize these conditions, the exact wording. So, you know, I'm I'm thinking that I don't submit anything tomorrow. We just continue this one more meeting to give us a couple more subcommittee meetings to get that done.
All right, we got we still have the whole issue with the mockup, which, like I said, on the on one of those, I forget what, oh, Tarrant Lane. They had they had drawn. They didn't want to wait until later. They had drawn a whole mockup.
Yeah, we're not Rick. I want to put the condition that we usually put that we're going to provide it.
Yep.
So that will be a condition.
Yep. Now, let's see the granite curbing. We talked about the stone wall. We talked about.
But that's not done yet. We got to fine tune that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm just I'm just going through the the issues I had, the sensor and the garage lights, which Peter is going to take care of theoretically. That's all I had.
Yeah. I mean, are you okay with that, Amy, that we just don't go forward next Wednesday and we just keep working here and get this buttoned up properly instead of giving a half baked plan to the board?
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Jim?
Well, I don't know how half. I mean, we're 99.
Yeah, but don't forget, I got to submit to them tomorrow, which we're not going to be in a position.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, all right.
You know, and I want to and I think a big part of this that we need to spend some time on is the operation and maintenance plan of the building.
Yes.
All right.
But that but that you know, that's pretty much. The. the same thing every job practically, add a cross out, right?
Yeah, but, but this one, I think, Jim, and I'm going through my notes of your board, this one's a little bit more critical because of the, of the visitor parking issue.
Yeah.
And, and the access to the building with the radio and the, you know, and.
Well, yeah, we had security and stuff like.
And security cameras that we've committed to and.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I mean, I know, I know Dave, you know, the chair really, you know, doesn't like delay. But, you know, I think he'll be okay with the fact that we've had two subcommittee meetings since your last meeting.
He doesn't like delay until he's got 12 cases before him in one night.
Yeah.
Then he changes, then everybody changes their mind.
I think the more, I think the more your subcommittee spends time on this, the easier it's going to be at the board when it's presented.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to send him a letter saying that, you know, we, we've talked and I'm going to continue it. And then I think I'm going to get on this. So I'd like to get a, I'd like to get, you know, maybe a subcommittee meeting. The problem you have, it's not a problem, you know, your board meets every two weeks where a lot of zoning boards meet once a month.
Yeah.
And when you leave a meeting and you've got material put together, you leave Wednesday night at 11 and you've got to submit stuff by Friday, a week from the Friday, which is basically a week.
Yeah.
So sometimes, you know, people have a big appetite on what they're going to be able to produce, and it's not as easy to do it in a week and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
A quick turnaround.
Yeah. So, you know, maybe, guys, we can, we can do a subcommittee meeting like, you know, because, because, because what's going to happen, well, actually, I'm looking at the calendar. So we've got next week and we've got the week after. So, okay, so maybe we can do a subcommittee meeting like a week from now.
On the 27th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll have all these plans buttoned up.
Well, wait a minute. I have my Tuesday church meetings unless Amy wants to do another one of these 6:30s.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying Thursday, 27th, Thursday to 27th.
Yeah, I know. I have, every Thursday, every Thursday at 4:30 is tagged for me.
Oh, you have church Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, Zuma church. Not, not physical going on my knees.
I mean, Amy is later better for you anyways.
Late is better for me, yeah, because London has judo until 5:45. So 6:30 is good for me. If that works for you guys.
I, I can do the 27th at 6:30.
Okay. Let's book it.
Okay.
Well, can you talk to Gail, Kim?
Yeah, I'll send her a note.
Okay. And I'll send a letter to Dave and the board. I'll, I'll explain that, you know, if it's okay with you guys, that we agree, it'd be better that we continue.
I see the biggest, the biggest issue here, quite frankly, is power at the moment.
And that's got to be resolved before we present any plan to the board.
Oh, yeah.
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 Well, I'm going to, if then, if Benny, if Benny boxes that, then make him box that, Jim. I'm going to, I'm going to get you in the loop with him if that's okay.
Thanks. We'll find a way, just like we did on Water Street.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we don't have to move the building for him.
Yeah, I'll, I'll never forget. I'll never forget going up to the project on Hopton Street and seeing that transformer in the front door.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, on, on another note, I think next week I might need to get you guys for a walk through with Harvard Mills on the landscaping.
Okay.
Is it going to be?
Yeah, let me know ahead of time. I've got a pretty full week next week. I have meetings Monday night, Tuesday night, I have two meetings. Wednesday, we have zoning this Wednesday, right? The 27th?
Yeah.
Yep. And I have a meeting prior to that. Now, this one Thursday I have.
So.
During the day, probably, well, obviously better for landscape.
Yeah.
But.
They were suggesting, let me see. Suggesting the 25th or 26th. I, I don't want to do it on the night of a zoning board meeting, right?
Right. So the 25th.
25th will be Tuesday.
So my kids have the dentist at one till probably two. And then London has judo at five. And I have a meeting starting at six. So I could do probably, how long do you think it would take, Brian? An hour?
I don't know, Jim. You know better than me. What's it going to take to?
Which, which meeting are we talking about?
Landscaping Harvard Mills to, to, to document the landscape because don't forget, you got.
No, no more than an hour because if, if, the last time we wasted a lot of time, as much as Amy likes to see all the units, we wasted a lot of time looking at prospective units for her when she's older. So, so if we stick to the outside, it's more than an hour.
Okay. Uh, yeah, you want to do, let's say, three then on Tuesday?
That's fine.
Okay. I think my husband's going to divorce me after this next week.
God bless him. What a patient guy.
Right?
So this is the 25th?
25th.
Yeah. At what time?
3 o'clock.
Okay.
3 o'clock. Well, we've already walked through the inside of this one anyway.
Yeah.
You sure you don't want to look and see whether it was dressed up with furniture and everything in place?
Oh, I mean, we'll have to do that another day.
Good.
On the same page. Thank you.
All right.
Jim, would you let Gail know on the 27th at 6:30?
Yeah, I'll do that just as soon as I get off here.
Okay.
Do we need to let her know about the 25th as well? Does that, is that a public hearing? No, okay.
No, that's just.
No, 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 we're just like we've done all the ones where we walked through. We can't, we can't invite the public and.
Yeah, that's not, I mean, this is, this is regarding a hearing that you, you're going to be voting on. That's already, that's already been done.
Yeah, right.
Right, okay.
This is just, this is really about confirming that done the work.
Yeah.
So we can say to the board, basically, you know, the, everything's all done, or we can need to hold a certain amount of money because the plants are not in, whatever the heck it is.
Well, don't forget, it was, it was, you and Amy have been designated by the board to deal with Benny directly.
Right.
That's right, okay.
We don't have to go, you know, unless there's something not complete, then you might have to go back to the board. But if you're satisfied, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All, all right. We all done?
And Jim, will you copy the chair when you schedule a meeting with Gail so Dave knows what's going on?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
With that, I'll, I'll close the meeting. The, the zoning board subcommittee meeting basically at 7:33 on January 20th, 2022.